The hour of 6:30, having come and gone, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, March 25, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is present. Alda Kovid Rajan.
Here.
Alda Kovid Rajan is present. Alda Uguir.
Here.
Alda Uguir is present. Alda Harrington McKenney is excused. Alda Knox.
Present.
Alda Knox is present. Alda Latimer Burris. Alda Latimer Burris Waes is present. Alda Madison.
Here.
Alda Madison is present. Alda Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Alda Martinez Rutherford is present. Alda Miyazé.
Present.
Miyazé is present. Alda Rommel.
Present.
Alda Rommel is present. Alda Tischler.
Here.
Alda Tischler is present. Alda Revere.
Here.
Alda Revere is present. Alda Vidiver.
Here.
Alda Vidiver is present. Alda Wajelia.
Present.
Wajelia is present. Alda Bennett is excused. Alda Conklin.
Present.
Alda Conklin is present. Alda Curry.
Here.
Alda Curry is present. Alda Duncan.
Present.
Alda Duncan is present. Alda Evers.
Here.
Alda Evers is present. Manmira of Quorum.
Thank you. As usual, I will remind us that we're here to do the business of the residents of Madison and ask that we do so with kindness and grace and that all concerned, whether members of the council, staff, or those here from the public, refrain from using any foul language in your remarks and in general, conduct yourself in a respectful way. We do have multiple honoring resolutions on the agenda tonight, so we'll start there. Item one is Legisstar 87325 proclaiming April 27, 2025 as World Migratory Bird Day 2025 in the city of Madison. On item one, President Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item one. There is no one to receive this, so we'll dispense with reading. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item one? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote and move on to item two, which is Legisstar 87564 commemorating the 55th anniversary of Earth Day on April 22, 2025, to proclaim April 26, 2025 as Earth Day Challenge Day and to endorse and encourage participation in the cleanup events at City of Madison Parks. President Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item two. Similarly, there is no one here to receive, so we'll dispense with reading. Is there any discussion or any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item two. And we will move on to item three. Item three is Legisstar 87620 declaring March 31, 2025 to be Transgender Day of Visibility in the city of Madison. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas International Transgender Day of Visibility was first celebrated in 2010 by trans advocate Rachel Crandall, the head of Transgender Michigan with the goal of celebrating the lives and contributions of trans people. And whereas there are over 1.6 million trans, non-binary, and gender expansive people in the United States, and whereas transgender and gender non-conforming folks are valued members of the city of Madison, and whereas on June 8, 2023, the city of Madison raised the trans flag at the Madison Municipal Building for the first time, having the flag fly for a week. And whereas also in June of 2023, the Madison, City of Madison declared itself a sanctuary for trans and non-binary individuals, stating a commitment to protecting transgender and non-binary individuals and stating that access, that access to healthcare is a fundamental right and all people in Madison and the state of Wisconsin should have access to all healthcare, including gender-affirming care. And whereas Transgender Day of Visibility additionally acknowledges the struggles that trans people face, such as poverty, discrimination, violence. And whereas due to factors such as discrimination and violence, not every trans person can or wants to be visible. And whereas this discrimination and violence against trans people has impacted Madison, leading to tragedy. Whereas Felicia Melton Smith, a transgender woman from Madison, was murdered while on vacation in Mexico in May 2008. Whereas Felicia and dedicated, was a dedicated activist to the Madison LGBTQIA+ community and was a fundraiser for the Madison AIDS Network and other charities. And whereas Felicia worked in the billing department for the University of Wisconsin Medical Foundation, and during her nights and weekends was part-time employee at the Shamrock Bar and Grill, where she was known for her smile, jokes, and an annual holiday fundraiser that raised money for gifts for people with HIV/AIDS. And whereas Skylar Marcus Lee, a 16-year-old transgender boy from Madison, took his own life in September 2015. Whereas Skylar was described as an influential youth leader at Madison's Gay Straight Alliance and Safe Schools, for Safe Schools, who had a gift for addressing why racial justice and LGBTQ justice needs to be a part of the same conversation to truly be successful. Whereas Skylar was an active member of both Madison Proud Theater and Madison West's Gay Straight Alliance, loved ballroom dancing, and was said to have an infectious kindness. And whereas there has been an intensifying backlash towards trans people in recent years, as evidenced by direct physical violence as well as legislative measures seen in 533 anti-LGBTQ+ bills proposed throughout the state legislatures in 2024, according to the American Civil Liberties Union. Whereas 14 of these anti-trans bills were from Wisconsin State Legislature, all of which were successfully defeated through multiple, though multiple required governor Tony Evers' veto power. And whereas the defeat of these bills is just one example of the resistance this discrimination has been met with, showing the strength and resilience of the trans community and our allies. Whereas the resilience of trans community has long been on display. And whereas the Stonewall uprising in 1969, which in part were led by trans women of color, marked a major turning point in the LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement. And whereas while the Stonewall uprising marked a turning point, there have been similar uprisings throughout the United States, including the city of Milwaukee with the Black Night Brawl in August of 1961. Whereas the Black Night Brawl was a self-defense resistance action led by Josie Carter, a gender non-conforming black queen, against four sailors who demanded admission to Black Night Bar without furnishing identification as required by all newcomers. And whereas in Madison spaces such as Backdoor Bar, opened in 1972, and the Cardinal Bar, opened in 1974, became the first places that publicly and specifically catered to queer clientele in Madison. And whereas the trans community has been historically resilient and will continue to be so. And whereas the Transgender Day of Visibility is celebrated on March 31 each year, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Madison declares March 31, 2025 as Transgender Day of Visibility. Be it further resolved that the city of Madison commits itself to supporting transgender and gender non-conforming residents of Madison and encourages all residents of Madison to resist hate and discrimination. And be it finally resolved that the city of Madison celebrates the lives and contributions of Madison's transgender community.
Thank you, Alder. We'll take that as moved by the Alder. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. We have with us tonight to accept the proclamation, Madison's own, the one and only Mercury Stardust. You would please come forward.
Hey, everyone. How you doing?
Sorry.
Hit it together.
How's that now?
Yeah, it's bad.
Good. Hey, everyone. Thank you so much for having me right now. Deena just texted me a little bit ago. And in true trans fashion, I put my makeup on and I came running. So this is a really important moment in US history, but especially for trans people. Trans Day of Visibility is a double-edged sword. For a lot of trans people, visibility is actually what gets you killed. For a lot of trans people, especially black trans women, it's extremely dangerous to be visible in the world in which we live in. Disproportionately, black trans women are killed in our community more than any other demographic. So when we talk about Trans Day of Visibility, what we're really talking about is trying to stand up against that, trying to take up space in spite of that danger, in spite of that fear. I travel all around the country giving speeches, talking about DIY compassionate care. For those of you who may know, I'm known as a trans handyman. I fix drywall for a living, and somehow that's made me qualified to talk on these issues. But that's actually the exact point. Trans Day of Visibility celebrates us all of all backgrounds, of all sizes, identities, and visibilities. I'm very visible as a very public trans woman on the internet. I speak in front of millions of people every single day. And I've raised over millions, $4.5 million for gender-affirming care for the nonprofit Point of Pride over the last three years. And in just a few days, on Trans Day of Visibility, I will be raising another million dollars that will effectively help thousands of trans people over the next couple of years. But all that being said, I would be sad if I did not mention the last part of the thing I always talk about. Being visible is a new thing for a lot of us. See, there's terms in the trans community that a lot of you may have heard of, you know, from being stealth. You know, you may have heard a term "brick" before. A term "brick" is used in the trans community to describe someone who is trans woman who does not pass. It was something that they coined back in the 60s and 70s, and it was meant to be rough around the edges. A trans girl who, no matter what, could not get those angles out of her cheekbones. And that was what a brick was. Bricks were killed. Bricks were not people that you saw very often. A lot of elders in our trans community would often talk about how they've never known anyone who was classified as a brick to past age of 35. I think about that a lot because I love calling myself a brick. I love saying it. Because, A, it's really just funny to call myself a trans handyman and also say I'm a brick. I think that's hilarious. But also because I don't think I could have existed in a way that I exist right now. And talking to all of you and then accepting this right now, if it wasn't for the fact of that visibility that I am so privileged to have. So on behalf of the entire trans community here in tropical Madison, Wisconsin, it sure does feel that way today, I want to say thank you for recognizing us, for allowing us to exist in the same spaces that you are, and for listening to us when we know we need to be heard. It means more to us now than any of us can possibly tell you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We have one additional speaker on item three, Cass Downing of District 18. Do we have Cass?
Hello. It's a real honor to be here today. Thank you, Deena, for all you stand for in our community. You truly are a visible icon in our community. Congratulations, Ms. Mercury. Hi. Again, visibility is a key, and thank you for being out on the front lines as much as you are. It is so super important that we are. I know for myself, being a young person was really a difficult thing for me to even deal with who I was as a person, not even having any clue as to what was going on on the inside of myself, in my mind, in my heart, and let alone not getting the support or education of who I am as a person. Those were different times, and I'm truly grateful for the generations today that the times have changed and there is more access to people who truly understand what being or who being transgender is. It's really an important thing to know about. Being transgender is to be a real person. It's something that we really, for real, deal with in our lives. I know I was a humble recipient of this last year. And, you know, my sister Felicia Melton Smith is mentioned in that, and that was truly a tragedy to lose her. She had, she was a very successful transgender woman in our community who started the gift drive at Christmas at the Shamrock Bar, which is a very longstanding iconic LGBTQ+ establishment, which unfortunately, some of those are disappearing, and we need to keep them around. She, you know, raised thousands of dollars by selling paper light bulbs that she cut out by hand on her shifts at the Shamrock and was able to provide gifts and comfort to people living with HIV/AIDS. And she's an amazing angel, and I'm glad to have her as one of mine in my life. I was thinking of successes of transgender people, and some of the successes that were able to be brought up was, I think about like the iconic model, Alex Kinsani, became the first trans woman to win Model of the Year this year. So that's a pretty amazing accomplishment. So that's a pretty amazing accomplishment in our transgender community. From influencing fashion and music and as a whole, I'm sorry, from fashion and music and the arts as a whole of helping advance science in medicine. Dr. James Berry performed one of the first successful C-sections, who was transgender. Ben Bars was the head of neurobiology at Stanford School of Medicine. Excuse me. Many LGBTQ-plus right victories have been championed, advocates like Marsha P. Johnson. And yes, honey, mhm. Rep. Sarah McBride became the first openly trans senator when she was elected in 2020. And I thought, you know, I'm going to humbly add myself as an award recipient, being born and raised here in Madison, Wisconsin, growing up in this community. One of the most heartfelt awards that I've received in my career as an entertainer is the Youth Empowerment Award, which I received by my son, Andrew Schuler, over there. So if you could give it up for Andy. I love you. Andy happens to be my drag daughter, Andy with an I domino as well. And it's a really important award to me, the Youth Empowerment Award. Nobody empowered me as a young child. And I know what I went through was tragic, and it was just icky. And if I can help somebody avoid going through some of the things that I had gone through, making some of life's mistakes that I had made, that's my mission. And I want to continuously empower youth and remind them, you are valid. Everything you feel as a transgender youth is real. These are things that you can find help to figure out within yourself, and it will come from you. It cannot come from anybody else. And you are lovable. You are worthy of respect, and you can grow up into a transgender adult and be successful. So thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to point out several people who are here today, Sunshine Rainbow and Tessa Jade, who are tirelessly working to bring attention to our issues. And I think we also have a kind of a superstar, Nemo, who has showed up too. I want to say thank you, Mayor, to all my colleagues on the council. Woo! I can't stop. And all the city staff. I turn 55 in May. I never thought I'd live to be this old, and it kind of sucks. But, but 15, 10 years ago, we weren't in spaces like this. We weren't on television. And now that visibility is costing us. But we will rise and fight, and we will be here whether you want us to be here or not. And everybody deserves to feel esteemed and valued, no matter who you are, where you are. And we are human beings. I never thought I'd have to say that. But we are people who are finding our happiness and comfort in our own bodies, just like you got to do during your formative years. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Martinez-Rutherford, for representing your community, not just your district, but the trans community as well. Thank you for being a trailblazer and for being the first out trans person on the City of Madison Common Council. We appreciate your service. I mean, it's well deserved. All right, we're going to hold it together here, folks. It's hard, I know. It's still early. The honoring resolution has been properly moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic honoring vote in favor? Seeing no objection, a unanimous vote is recorded. And then without objection, we'll continue on with honoring resolutions and go to Item Item 81 is Legisstar 87680, commending and recognizing, now I'm going to start crying, commending and recognizing Tom Lynch for his service, leadership, and contributions to the City of Madison as the Director of Transportation. And for this, I'll turn first to Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you. Whereas Tom Lynch joined the City of Madison in 2018 as Director of Madison's Reformed Transportation Department. And whereas Tom Lynch led the newly-reformed Transportation Department to shift the paradigm to provide a more integrated, sustainable, and safe transportation system. And whereas Tom Lynch helped initiate, support, and champion major sustainable transportation policy initiatives such as the Complete Green Streets, Vision Zero, Transit Network Design, Transportation Demand Management, and Possible Future Passenger Rail Initiatives. And whereas Tom Lynch helped lead, guide, and coordinate major transportation infrastructure investments that will help shape Madison's transportation infrastructure for decades.
Whereas these investments include Metro's Hanson Road Satellite Facility, East-West Bus Rapid Transit, the Wilson Street Garage, the Lake Street Garage, the intercity bus terminal, a possible future north-south bus rapid transit line, and improved all ages and abilities bike facilities. And whereas Tom Lynch grew the Department of Transportation and facilitated the successful transition and integration of the crossing guard program and parking enforcement program into the department. And whereas Tom Lynch played a critical role representing the city and working with the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation on Stoughton Road North, Stoughton Road South, and the I-39, 9094 projects. And whereas the success of all of these initiatives require effective coordination with Madison's residents, elected officials, and state agencies.
Whereas Tom Lynch impact on Madison's transportation system have been transformative, consequential, and will last for decades. And now therefore be it resolved that the residents of the City of Madison, through the Mayor and Common Council, hereby express their deep appreciation to Tom Lynch for leading the department to provide a sustainable transportation system needed for Madison's future. And be it further resolved that city staff, mayor, and elders wish Tom success as he pursues the next phase in his contribution.
It's just been a real pleasure and privilege to serve the city the last seven years in this capacity. This is a city that I love. And when I think of what's accomplished, you know, through the mayor and the council and the previous councils over the last seven years, it's consequential. Like, we all like to think about bus rapid transit, right? But there were so many other things, right? The Hanson Road Facility, Vision Zero, Complete Green Streets, the Transportation Demand Management Ordinance. And all of them had a little bit of controversy, right? Like, like buses on a straight street, you remember that? Or, did I mention trees on Minna Point Road? You know, and, or even, even just right here on Wilson Street, you know, Alder, you know, and all of you, you know, you guys had the, you had the courage to lead, to accept a lot of emails, because I know you all got a lot of emails, right, on all of these things, right? And you had the courage to just make the decisions and move forward, and because you did, I feel like a lot of things got done. And so, well, I'm privileged and I'm honored and thank you for this. I also just want to kind of put it right back at you because it's through your work, your acceptance of the emails and the calls and all that. And those are hard, because I get those too, right? And so, I know, and you did it. And so, thank you for the honor. I thank you for all that you all accomplished.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to take that as moved by Alder Govindarajan and seconded by Alder Martinez-Rutherford. Alder Knox, discussion?
Just wanted to have a few comments, if I may.
Absolutely.
Tom, you're certainly deserving of your retirement. I've always liked that you were always a professional and always very helpful and patient, too, you know? And then I also wanted to mention that, I don't know if former Alder Carter called you, but she wanted you to know, to congratulate you, and also she didn't want to miss your retirement party. I don't know if she did or not, but I'm just letting you know that for her. And thanks for serving our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Barris?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, while you said, you know, so many of us have had courage to do things, I applaud you. First of all, I want to say congratulations on, which I've already said, on your retirement, and know that what you've done will last probably much, outlast all of us. It's going to go beyond a regular lifetime. But what I appreciate most about you is that you had the courage to explain things to us when they're controversial. For the bus rapid transit, the conversation that we had about Austin, like, it was like, okay, so it's going to be down the road before we see all the benefits, but we will see them. So I appreciate that your honesty and just, you know, being straightforward and including all of us in, even if you thought we opposed something that you were doing. So I appreciate that and hope you have fun riding your bike and relaxing and traveling.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Revere?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I want you to know how much of a pleasure it's been working with you, and it has been way more than seven years. The resolution is beautiful, but for those of us that have been around a long time, know that you really worked for the city for a lot longer than seven years on the most major projects. It seemed to me that Strand Associates and you as the project manager were the city's go-to consultant when it came to huge projects. I won't be able to name them all, but the one where, I remember talking to Mayor Soglin at the time, where I was so impressed with you was the redesign of the Hairball Intersection and those public meetings at Manona Terrace. For those that don't know, I think most of you do, but the Hairball Intersection is John Nolan Drive, Blair Street, East Wilson Street, and Willie Street. And as a project manager for the city's, as a city's consultant at Strand, Tom did a brilliant job working with stakeholders. His style, his personality was just perfect. And I know that that was just like one of the most recent examples, when you were in the private sector, working for public clients, and there's a whole lot of others that you worked on before you became an official city employee. Let me also say that I'm probably the only one here that remembers the city's last transportation director. I don't know if anyone could even name the gentleman, but it was Warren Sommerfeld. And we went decades without a Director of Transportation, thinking that we didn't need one. And I sincerely, Tom, remember thinking on many occasions, and you kind of stole some of my lines in your brief remarks, about certainly educating me, and I thank you for this, about the importance of all ages and abilities, bicycle infrastructure. But the cycle track on Wilson Street was one that was very controversial and an example, again, just like the Hairball Intersection, but I would say more so, your skill set was brilliant in that regard. But anyway, I remember saying, when the Mayor Soglin was selecting a Transportation Director, I won't go into the weeds and all this, but we had a special committee that merged, you know, merged all the transportation-related committees in the city, and one of the recommendations was we should have a Director of Transportation. Again, it had been decades. And I remember thinking to myself, Tom, over and over, how brilliant it was, number one, that we had a Director of Transportation again, and how brilliant your hire was, and frankly, how difficult it'll be for your successor to fill your big shoes, because you really have made such a tangible difference. As I say, it's not, it hasn't been, what, seven years? Like the resolution says, it's been decades of service to the people of Madison, whether you were technically in the private sector or in the public sector. It blurs all lines, and you have such a record of accomplishment, and I really will miss working with you. I could cite other examples. You already named some others in your remarks, like the specifics of the BRT route downtown and dealing with special event detours and all that good stuff. The inner-city bus terminal, which I certainly hope you come back for the ribbon-cutting on out of retirement on your bike and help us cut the ribbon for that one on Lake Street. But anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you. Tom, you will be missed. You certainly leave a great legacy and record of accomplishment. Thank you for your public service and Godspeed, my friend.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue. I will save my speech for the retirement party and just say thank you, Tom. We appreciate it. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote in favor. And that will bring us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda from members of the body? Seeing none, that will take us to the presentation of the Consent Agenda. President Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Items, agenda items that are supermajority items, these items are recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call is requested. Legisstar Item 87623, opposing Social Security Administration Office closures and other cuts to Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security. This item requires 14 votes under suspicion of the rules MGO 2.055. Legisstar Item 87332, authorizing the Parks Division to submit and if awarded, accept grant of up to $500,000 from the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for park improvements and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to accept grant award. This requires 15 votes. Legisstar Item 87420, amending the Community Development Authority, the CDA, 2025 adopted operating budget to accept the unappropriate fiscal year 2019, $8,404; fiscal year 2021, $8,724; and the fiscal year 2022, $8,231 of public housing capital grant funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HAD. 15 votes required. Legisstar Item 87421, amending the engineering mayor Legislaw item 87421, amending the Engineering Mayor Street's 2025 adopted capital budget to change $500,000 of tax increment district supported geo-borrowing to tax increment financing increment and amending the Traffic Engineering 2025 adopted capital budget to add $250,000 of TIF increment for TIF 51 in 2025. 15 votes are required. Legislaw item 87449, authorizing the City's Economic Development Division to submit an application for $250,000 grant from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, IRO Size Redevelopment Grant Program. And if awarded, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with WEDC to accept IRO Size Redevelopment Grant Award for the use of the funds and amending EDD's 2025 adopted capital budget within the land banking program. 15 votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda is legislaw item 87486, recreate vacant position 3052 of Transit Accounting Technician 3, a represented position as a Transit Employee Relations Assistant and nonrepresented confidential position. This is an introduction for new business for referral without debate, and it has been withdrawn from introduction per the agency request. Agenda items excluded, one, request of Alders, two, speakers registered by noon on March 25. Legislaw item 87451, adopting the 2024 State Street Pedestrian Mall Experiment Report, their speakers register. Legislaw item 87044, amending or repealing various sections in Chapter 8, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinance related to reorganization of city boards, commissions, and committees is being asked for reconsideration by Alder Wohle. Legislaw item 87159, approving landmark nominations on the property located at 633 East Johnson Street as the Benjamin and Amy Butt's house on District 6. There's registered speakers. Legislaw item 87623, opposing Social Security Administration Office closures and other cuts to Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security. We have registered speakers, and again, this is going to be under, adopted under the suspension rules. Legislaw item 87229, it's a temporary Class B retailer license concurrent with street use permit on the Don Juan Monroe Neighborhood Association event located at 1900 block of Monroe Street on April 12, 2025, from 8 to 2. The recommendation for this item is to grant, and we have a registered speaker. And introductions from the floor at the time, we don't have any. And agenda items with corrections is agenda legislaw item 87614, authorizing the city to execute a golf course use agreement between the City of Madison and Champions for Kids, Inc., during the 2025-2029 golf seasons. The introduction for new business for referral without debate, update list of districts to remove District 10 and replace it with District 11. And that's all I have. Those items added to the consent agenda with speakers are agenda items 7, 11, and 12. Thank you.
Thank you, President Figaro Cole. Just see if there are any other requests for separation from the consent agenda at this time. Alder Conklin?
Thank you. I wanted to be added to agenda item number 11, legislaw 87623, please.
And before we get, thank you, Alder, before we get a slew of those, I'll let you all know it's my intent to ask unanimous consent to add the whole council. So perhaps we can deal with it when we take that up. Are there any other items that Alders was to see separated from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, then let me go through that one more time, just to make sure we all have it. Items 32, 35, 36, and 38 are 15-vote items. On item 59, the recommendation is to withdraw and not introduce. The following items are excluded, items 5, 7, 11, 12, 51, and 52. Again, that's 5, 7, 11, 12, 51, and 52. No introductions from the floor, and we have a correction on item 71, noting the correct district is District 11. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the, I'm trying to find the item regarding the one on Monroe Street, the strictly...
Yes, that we have a registrant on, yes.
Yeah, I just texted the owner who had registered to speak. He'd like to change it available to answer questions. He's not, he does not need to speak. So we could leave that on the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any objection to leaving that on the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll leave item 12 on the consent agenda. Thank you, Alder. So then, items excluded will be items 5, 7, 11, 51, and 52. All good? Okay. So then, President Figaro Cole, a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, that vote will be adopted, and we'll move on to public comment. Our first item with public comment is item 7. We have, this is item 7, approving a landmark nomination of the property located at 633 East Johnson Street as the Benjamin and Amy Butt's house in District 6. Our only registrant wishing to speak is Robert Cluba of District 6. Do we have Bob? I don't see him here or online. So we'll move on.
Mayor, someone named Beatrice just raised their hand. I'm not sure if they're related to Bob Cluba, anyway.
Well, let's try.
There we go. I'm sorry, last time I used Zoom, I was testifying on behalf of my mother in a court hearing.
That explains it. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, thank you, facilitator. I didn't catch your name. But my name is Bob Cluba. I'm sorry I didn't change my name. Thank you, Mayor, Alders, and staff for the opportunity to support your approval of the nomination of the Benjamin and Amy Butt's house. I started work on this landmark nomination two years ago, and I was very, very lucky to receive the owner's permission to nominate this property. I'm happy to report that the Madison Trust for Historic Preservation subsequently took the lead in coordinating and paying for the work required to submit a nomination, in spite of the reputation as promoting the history of dead white guys. An important fact about this work is that a single landmark nomination costs between $3,500 and $7,500 and requires serious academic research. Nominations are too expensive for most local cultural nonprofit organizations. Too often, our historic and cultural resources don't get this level of attention and are lost to the wrecking ball. At least in this instance, we are being proactive rather than reactive in our preservation efforts. I think that this building's nomination is important for several reasons. First, it was the residence of prominent members of the late 19th and early 20th century Madison African-American community. The house is located a block away from the East Dayton Historic District, which includes the Carmichael House at 114 North Blount Street. Like the Carmichael House, the Butt's house is not pretty. It has notable, no notable architectural features. Its interior has been remodeled to house students. It leans noticeably to the west. But as with the Carmichael House, the, but as with the Carmichael House, who lived here and what happened here are important to an underrepresented part of Madison's cultural heritage. Importantly, this Madison house contributes to the vernacular context of the James Madison Park neighborhood. However, without knowing this house's background, another owner could have easily obtained a demolition permit in order to construct a four-story building because of its appearance and condition. With your approval of this property's landmark nomination, you will make sure that future Madisonians will learn about these important, about these two important Madisonians and the place where they lived. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, and we'll move on to item 11, which is opposing Social Security Administration Office closures and other cuts to Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security. We have two registrants wishing to speak. The first is Gretchen Lowe of District 3, to be followed by Jessica LaPointe. Gretchen?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to thank Marsha, I'd like to thank Marsha Romo and her sponsors for putting this resolution to the floor. Jessica LaPointe, who with the American Federation of Government Employees, presented a program to us, retiree, asking retirees about what is happening to the Social Security Administration and the devastation of the cuts that are happening. And the results are the resolution that you are, I hope that you are supporting tonight. It very disappointing to me to hear the Department of Commerce department head speak about fraudsters and relating that to Social Security recipients. He said that fraudsters are people who complain loudly and about everything. And he equated that with his 94-year-old mother-in-law, who would never complain and would never call Social Security because she missed a monthly payment. Based on the fact sheet of the Social Security Administration, there are 7 million Americans who depend on their benefit checks because it's 90% of their income. The voices that he hears are not from fraudsters. They are people who need benefits. There are people who have lost their jobs. There are people who care about the needy and desperate people in our nation today. Let's have to take my breath a minute. I have to look at my notes, I'm sorry. The actions taken by the current administration are intended to weaken the efficiency of Social Security, and the intent is to privatize many government departments. This privatization of services do not benefit the American people. It benefits the corporations and millionaires of this country. We not, we must speak up. And I want to thank you, all of you, who intend to support this resolution, because these are your neighbors, these are your relatives, these are the people we care about in our communities, and we must stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jessica LaPointe of Morrisonville, Wisconsin. Jessica?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody, thank you so much for having me on. I am Jessica LaPointe. I do live in Morrisonville, which is outside of DeForest, but I work out of the Madison, Wisconsin Social Security Administration Field Office on Odana Road. I've been a claim specialist for the last 16 years. I'm here speaking today as a concerned citizen of the Madison servicing area, and then on behalf of the American Federation of Government Employees who represents the remaining 14 employees at the Madison Social Security Administration Office on Odana. So the situation at Social Security, right here, serving members of the Madison community is pretty dire. We've had about a 50% staff reduction in just the last three years alone. We typically have about 28 employees who are frontline workers, trained-up workers serving the Madison area. We're now reduced to 14. And Madison, the Madison Social Security Office, as many of you may know, if you've tried to call or visit, is really struggling to keep up with public demand based on the the sort of stripped-to-the-bone staffing that we have at that office. In recent times, we were not able to take claims for the Madison area, having to farm those out to community offices in the surrounding areas, not in Madison, to do the work over the telephone, because we didn't have enough staff to handle the influx of applicants in the Madison area, which is pretty consistent with with what is going on nationwide at the Social Security Administration. We're at a 50-year low in staffing while serving an all-time high rate of beneficiaries. In fact, 10,000 Americans reach retirement age every day and are contacting our offices for earned benefits and services, and we really struggle to keep up with that demand. And that's based on over a decade and a half of budget cuts and hiring freezes. But what's been happening since January is that we've, we felt like we're just full-on under siege as as an administration. I'm not trying to get too hyperbolic here, but I just want to give you an understanding. We had employees that took this buyout offer to leave the agency.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, so bottom line is, is that we urge everybody in Madison to support this resolution because we we need to be able to service the community of Madison, and field offices will close as they were looking to do in southeast Cleveland if we no longer have enough staff to do it. Also, there are about 50 offices up for closure on the Department of Government Efficiency list on the internet, and we are worried that the Madison office is going to be next. And we also administer Medicare, and we work with the state to administer SSI benefits that includes Medicaid's. We're a vital...
That's your three minutes.
We're vital for service in the Madison community, and we don't know what would happen if we had to close down. We think that the homeless population would increase drastically.
If you could wrap up, please, Jessica.
Yep, considering that the highest rate of growing homeless population are our nation's seniors. So we're just very concerned, and we would like you all to support this resolution.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for either of our registrants on item 11? Seeing none, thank you, and we'll move on to item 51, which is adopting the 2024 State Street Pedestrian Mall Experiment Report. On item 51, we have one registrant wishing to speak, Matt Trammell of District 4, representing Madison Central Business Improvement District. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Madison Central Business Improvement District is dedicated to supporting economic vitality, safety, and vibrancy of downtown Madison. We serve the greater State Street, Capitol Square, and First Settlement District, working collaboratively with the city of Madison, property owners, businesses, and city stakeholders to make downtown the best place to shop, dine, work, and explore. As a special assessment district, we provide important services, including marketing, public programming, business support, and advocacy to ensure thriving downtown. In December of 2023, Madison Central Bid learned that it would be responsible for programming and events as part of the pedestrian mall experiment. Unfortunately, that timing came after the bid's 2024 operating plan and budget were approved by the city council, and the city did not allocate any additional program funding through its annual Summer in Your City contract with the bid, which totaled $62,225. Although the bid immediately dedicated itself to supporting the success of the pedestrian mall experiment through programming and event production, those activities had costs, costs that were not budgeted for and costs that have risen steadily commensurate with the pace of inflation. In 2024, we programmed 36 unique events in the 406-inch blocks of State Street that generated more than 94,000 visitors, according to Placer AI pedestrian tracking data. Those events were produced at a cost of more than $15,500 and consumed roughly 350 hours of total staff time between May and October. So while we were tasked with providing free public entertainment that created vibrancy and attracted people to the pedestrian mall, significant real costs were incurred by the bid. It is all, it is also important to note that although the city provides $62,225 to support public programming funds through our Summer in Your City contract, those funds are invested in programs across the entire bid, not just on State Street. And roughly $15,000 is paid directly back to the city to cover costs associated with event production. directly back to the city to cover costs associated with event production, including permitting fees, bus reroute fees, and supplemental police support from MPD. As you are considering extending the pedestrian mall for future years, I would encourage you to consider the time, resources, and investment that it requires for the bid to provide public programming. As was the case with our 2023 operating plan, our 2024 operating plan was again approved by the city council in November with no additional program funds. Absent any additional funding support, we will unfortunately need to prioritize our limited resources to ensure our programming fully supports our most popular events, including the Madison Night Market, Shine on Madison, The Cheese Walk, Downtown Family Halloween, Lunchtime Live, and others. And of course, we will continue to prioritize core functions that directly contribute to building community and strengthening our downtown small business community, including connecting visitors and boosting public engagement downtown, driving culture through events and placemaking, representing and resourcing our bid members, and supporting community safety efforts.
I'm sorry, that's your three minutes, I should have given you a warning.
Thank you for opportunity to talk tonight.
Thank you. This is the only registrant on item 51, are there any questions? Seeing none, then, oh, sorry, I gave you guys a moment to actually raise your hands. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Thank you for letting, giving us more information. I just didn't catch what you said, was it fracking program? And can you talk a little bit how that works? That you said, I think you said Pacer AI pedestrian tracking? And thanks for your speech.
Yes, and I appreciate your question. Yes, we use Placer AI, which is an anonymized pedestrian tracking platform to, which provides us the ability to put points of interest around different places anywhere really in the world, but obviously we use it in downtown Madison, and it gives us the ability to understand more who, who's coming in and out, and how many people are there, how long they're there.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions? All right, seeing none, thank you, Matt. And then our final item for public comment is Agenda Item 52, amending or repealing various sections in Chapters 8, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinance as related to the reorganization of city boards, commissions, and committees. This item is up for reconsideration vote tonight. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Erica Bach of Middleton, Wisconsin. Do we have Erica? Does not seem like we have Erica in the room or on the Zoom. All right. So we will move on then to item 5, which is a presentation by the Government Affairs Team and a briefing on our state legislative affairs. We have the team from Welch here.
Didn't know it was a little podium.
It, it does move if you need it to.
We'll get cozy. We ready?
Yeah, please.
Wonderful. Good evening, everybody, I'm Peter Welch, the managing partner of the Welch Group. Jim and I wanted to come down and talk a little bit about what we plan to do, and how you can help, and answer any questions that you might have about our firm, our strategy, or how you can help moving forward. So we thought we'd start with just some brief introductions. Again, I'm Peter Welch, I'm the managing partner at the firm. I joined the firm in 2020. Before that, I was lobbying in the space of healthcare for the physicians at the Wisconsin Medical Society, and before that, I was working in higher education in a public affairs role as well. Jim?
Thanks, everybody. First of all, I want to say how much I appreciate your service to the city. My background, I started in local government, started at the town level, then went on to the county board, and then finally on to the state legislature. So I have a good grasp of local government and what you all have to put up with and what you do for the community, so I just want to say how much I appreciate that. I joined the Welch Group after almost 12 years in the legislature back in 2022. Have been really excited to get to work for the City of Madison. I think there's a lot of things that we can do to, to help the city not only get, you know, get around a strategy moving forward, but also to get some things accomplished for the city that maybe aren't happening across the street now. So again, excited to work for you all and happy to answer any questions as we get towards the end.
So I, we thought we'd take a little bit of time and kind of talk about broad strategies for a firm like ours that we recommend generally to all clients to be successful at the state Capitol, tailored to the specific situation, as, as Jim indicated, for City of Madison. So one thing that I find myself repeating to our clients all the time is that focus always wins. The more focused you are in your efforts as an advocacy organization, the more success you're likely to have. You come to the legislature and say, these are our nine priorities, they're not going to be as receptive as you saying, these are our two priorities, and here's why we think we can get them done. Second is the importance of coordinating all of our voices together. So making sure that as we do engage all of you in working with the legislature and reaching out to those folks and getting your opinion about what we're pursuing, speaking with one voice as, as far as it relates to the legislature and our priorities therein. Third is building a broad coalition of allies. So part of what we want to be pursuing is, our efforts in the State House are looking to allies from across the state who share our goals, you know, not just for the betterment of the City of Madison specifically, but for the betterment of relationships between municipalities and the state writ large. So those arguments, or those, those strategies can bring in an alliance that maybe carries more people who have less baggage, frankly, than the City of Madison does with the legislature. And, and finally, the sort of slow but important process of building trust. That takes time with the legislature, and this is a lot of what Jim and I spend our time doing, is walking around saying, hi, City of Madison has lobbyists now, and they're us, and you know us. And so when we come to talk to you about these issues, you know, we know how to bring it to certain legislators in a way that helps them understand and reach that common ground that we're bringing them to, right? So those relationships that Jim and I have built over the years are now your relationships too. So we are going to leverage those to build those friendships, those relationships, that trust, that allows us to come and slowly build towards accomplishing our goals as a, as a city unit. So one of the things that, that the mayor asked us to address is, how can all of you be helpful? And so there's, there's going to be opportunities as our strategy matures that we will definitely need engagement from council members to help talk to legislators, to be present in the Capitol, to make sure that we're leveraging your relationships that you already have, especially with folks in the Madison area. But that's going to be strategically deployed, right? We need to, you need to trust us and our council on when does that need to happen, and in what manner does it need to happen? Because as we're architecting this, this relationship, there'll be a time when we say, now is the time where they need to hear from you, now is the time where you need to come in with other municipal representatives and say, this is why it's going to be good for all of the cities in Wisconsin that may benefit from a legislative proposal. This is why it's good for all of us and Madison, and this is why Madison's success is good for the success of the state. So those arguments are going to mature over time, and we will have spots for you all to be active with those, with those legislators, both that you overlap within your own constituencies, but also the legislature more broadly. I think that covers, oh, something that would be very helpful as we're learning the city structure as well, we understand you as a council have your own chief of staff, I think, right? Hi, I'm Peter. We would love to continue to build that relationship. So there's many of you, there's only two of us, the more that we can funnel requests, questions, ideas through your staff, the better. That gives us one easy point person. Of course, Jim and I can make ourselves available to any of you for questions or thoughts, but for sort of efficiency's sake, many of you probably have the same questions, so if we can work to funnel them through your existing staff, that's great for us, that we have that relationship we can develop over time with staff too. Yeah, you want to add anything else, Jim?
Yeah, so Peter's absolutely right on, on what the strategy is to, to build relationships within the Capitol and how you can be helpful. But to be clear, there are ways that you can be unhelpful, right? I mean, and that's, I just want to be honest with you about that. Having been in the, in the state building in the Capitol for, for almost 12 years, we saw it a lot, where groups would come in, they'd have a list of three, four, or five priorities, and the lawmakers would look at them and say, but which one is the most important, right? And they're trying to get you to say, to single something out. The problem with that is then everybody that goes into that office, or people that are going to other offices, might all have different number ones. And then the strategy kind of falls apart. Then lawmakers look at you and they say, you know, your group doesn't have their act together. Your group can't even figure out what is the top priority because everybody's saying something different. So I think that's, that's really important. You stole my piece of paper, Peter. And also, again, part of that effort, speaking with one voice, is making sure we are coordinating with council staff and the mayor's office. Super important, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Everybody's going to have differences of opinion, people are going to have different ideas on what should be a priority, but the decision on how we move forward and the strategy we use should be all-encompassing, everybody on the same, on the same page as we move forward. Also, I, I know, having been over there and dealing with some of the personalities in that building, that can be difficult sometimes, and, you know, tempers can get raised, voices can, you know, things can get heated in those meetings. You know, my recommendation is always, as, as you guys know, and I am assuming that's how you operate within the council, you get more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. The more we can, the more we can keep the level down and just continue to talk about our priorities, why they're important for us, why, like Peter said, the success of Madison means the success of this state as a whole. That's really the message we have to drive home. Nice thing about being outside of the Capitol now and not over there is you get to work with everybody, right? And that's how it should be over there, unfortunately, it's not. But you get to work with everybody, you get to figure out, you, you really find out in short order that people generally, we have a lot more in common than we do differences, right? And that's what our goal is, is to show the current majority party that there, there are a lot of great things that the city is doing, a lot of great things that they can rally behind, and what we can do if funding is increased, what other priorities that you can forward, what else you can do for the city that will help the state. So I think those are, those are the things that are, that are really important. So I don't know if, I'll go over kind of where we're at in the legislature now, but do you guys have any, do we have any questions at this point on kind of where we're at?
Any questions before we go into this? So just to be clear, you're going to give us a little update on sort of where we are in the budget process and what's going on in the Capitol? So if you have questions about that, they will answer that in a minute, but just on the sort of process and approach, Alder, you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the things that you've already mentioned about strategy that's resonated the most going through the budget process here last year, looking at the large number of referendums across the whole state, is this point you've made about building a coalition, which I assume is a somewhat different process than interacting with the individual legislatures. I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more of that, how you go about that process to, for instance, engage with the City of LaCrosse, or Eau Claire, or Green Bay, and whether there's anything common council members can do to help you with that process?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So one of the things that I, I think of right off the bat is the municipal services payment, right? That's something that's important to the city, increasing funding for that. The governor had that in his, in his budget, went from like 37% to 72%, which isn't 100, but it's better than 36 or 37. So on, on an issue like that, our best allies with this current legislature are going to be cities like, you know, counties like Waukesha, who really came out publicly. You know, there are going to be some times where the City of Madison might not be the best one to be the tip of the spear on going to the legislature. That's why it's important to build those coalitions. So on that issue, you know, even though the governor put it in his budget, I, I suspect it might not survive when the lawmakers, legislature puts their budget together. But if it doesn't, our, you know, we've, we've got a multi-pronged strategy to engage those communities around, around the state, working at times with the League of Municipalities to, to help amplify those voices, and then we can follow in behind some of those other voices that might be a little bit more impactful with the, with the majority party currently. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
The other question was, that's a different process than working with legislators, is there anything council members can do to assist in that process?
Yeah, I think for me, as, as you're, as you all are kind of forwarding your priorities to your, as a council, it would be very helpful if you could identify relationships you have, not only in the city, but around the state as well. So if you have relationships in, with, you know, people in government and other parts of the state, that would be really useful to know. If you have relationships with lawmakers that aren't just the, the City of Madison, that kind of stuff would be helpful to know. Business connections, anything like that that you can think of, where as we go forward with our strategy, if we come across something, we can, we can kind of generate that list, look at it, and then say, you know, John would be a perfect person to go talk to this individual, so.
Thank you very much, that's helpful.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Viniver?
Can you tell us a little bit about how you'll work collaboratively, collaboratively with the university? I'm thinking of, you know, they have been prohibited from building dorms, and that pushes the need for students to live essentially onto the city's shoulders, and they also have a funding freeze, and they're talking about increasing their enrollment by up to 5,000 students a year. We don't have a place for them to live. So can you talk about how you'll work collaboratively with universities so that we're not put in a position where we suddenly have 5,000 more students, a place for them to live?
That's a, that's a great question, and there are, just so you're aware, there are, there are conversations ongoing now. I know the governor put the dormitory in his budget. It is highly unlikely that, that that survives. So I, I think, you know, we've had some discussions with people at the university, but ultimately, you know, it's going to be in your direction, how much you want us to get involved, because the more, you know, we can be supportive of UW efforts on things, but I don't know how much political capital you want to use on somebody else's priorities, even though they kind of align, we just have to be a little bit careful about that. But I know that there's, there's ongoing conversations about solving that housing issue, so whether or not this, this dorm survives, I, I think there, those conversations will continue.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm struck by your, your major piece of advice, which is, what is your number one priority? And I think we will all struggle with picking one thing, because we have such multifaceted needs. So I mean, I could tell you, I really care about environmental stuff, or housing, or getting fair, our fair share of revenues. Given that we have, you know, all these things that we think we need, how do we, how would you advise us to, to hone in? Is it like one year we pick one thing, next year do something else, or? Help me understand this strategy.
Yeah, I, I think that's, those are discussions I would encourage you guys to have internally as you're, as you're going through this process of figuring out priorities, because like I said, I'm sure everybody's got different ideas on what those should be. What Peter was saying is, if you walk into a legislative office, and it's, it's got to be as few words as possible. And this isn't a knock on lawmakers or a knock on the staff, but the more words are on there, the less likely they are to read them. And if you come in and here's your list of priorities, and it's all, you know, 10 things on the front side, eight things on the backside, it, it's just not going to get any attention. So you got to kind of prioritize, it's, it is okay to talk about other things, but I think when you go in and specifically meet with lawmakers, it's trying to leave them with something that they can wrap their heads around. If you go in there and you talk about 15 different things, they're probably not going to remember any of them. If you go in there and talk about three, the likelihood is they'll probably remember all three or at least a couple of them. So I know that's a difficult process with a diverse body like this, but I'm, I'm assuming, you know, funding is generally at the top because funding helps you do all those other things a little bit easier and more efficiently, right? So you just got to kind of work through that as a, as a council. So you've just got to kind of work through that as a, as a council.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll add, it's something we, we do a lot where we can talk about priorities versus values of an organization. So coming in and saying, you know, as a body of Alders, as the city, we believe these things. Right? We, we are working towards X, Y, and Z as what we believe to be, you know, our job as good stewards of an urban area, of a municipality. That said, then you can dial in, as Jim indicated, to like, this priority is based on our council and the priorities of the mayor and you guys, attainable. Right? To come in and say, all these things we want to achieve eventually, but today we're here to talk to you about this specific thing that we've laid the groundwork for how it's achievable for you, Mr. or Mrs. legislator, today. And so like, part of that groundwork is not abandoning the things that we care about as a body, but just making sure that we're honing into that legislature. Here's, here's the action you can take today, we're not trying to boil the ocean.
And, you know, one of the, one of the benefits of having people that are in the Capitol every day, building those relationships with all 132 lawmakers, is that we know what they all care about. Right? I mean, we know which buttons to push, we know their districts, we know kind of where they're coming from and what their ideas are and what their sensitivities are. So those are things that we can use in our, our strategy. Our pitch, when we go into lawmakers, is almost never exactly the same. Because it will depend on who we're talking to at any given time, you know, what we highlight in our conversations. Because everybody responds to things a little bit differently. And, and that's, that's an important part of this advocacy process, is, is knowing these people, you know, I go out and have a beer with Democrats and Republicans quite often, getting to know them personally, their, their likes, their dislikes, you know, how many kids they have, and where, you know, where they grew up, things like that, developing those personal relationships is really important.
Thank you. Don't see any other questions, so I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. So I'll just give you a real brief overview of kind of where we're at in the session. Obviously, I'm sure you're all, all aware that the legislative maps changed in, in 2024. That led to a whole host of new people coming in after the November elections. So the majorities in the Assembly and the Senate for Republicans shrank considerably. Republicans in the Assembly went from 64 down to 54. Republicans in the Senate went down from 22 down to 18. So in an ideal world, that's where you see all this bipartisan cooperation. Right? I mean, that's where people are like, okay, we don't have these huge majorities anymore. We really got to get down to work and, and work with the other side to get stuff done. That's not happening right now, unfortunately. It is a very slow start to the session. I think part of that has to do with the elections next week for, for DPI and for the State Supreme Court. If you look at what Republicans have put on the agenda for their floor session days, first education bills, then crime bills. So pretty transparent what, what they're focusing on going into the April elections, focusing on issues that might play in those elections. So no matter what happens on April 1st, what the result of those elections are, it's, it's going to be a tough session to get anything done. The, the majority party is already signaling that, you know, they'll be on the floor as much as they were last session, but maybe not taking up as many bills. If you listen, if you kind of read between the lines of some of the public statements we've seen about the budget and, you know, the Republicans' tax cut and things like that, if you read between the lines, I think it is, they're, they're signaling that it might be difficult for them to even pass a budget this year. I am working very hard to convince them that that would be a bad idea, because I just, I don't want to see Wisconsin start operating like Washington DC. We have to avoid that as much as possible. So we have to keep some semblance of normalcy going. So where we're at, the, the governor introduced his budget a few weeks ago for local governments. He had $1 billion in there for local governments, funding if they froze their tax levy. He also, like I said, increased that municipal services payment from 37 to 72% reimbursement. Scott Allen, Republican, from Waukesha is working on, he's talked about working on legislation to address that municipal services payment. The speaker has not completely ruled it out, close, but not completely. Of course, he, I think he said publicly, well, what are we going to get in return? So I'm, I'm not giving up the ghost yet on, on municipal services payment because there are a bunch of people interested. But I think in this short window that we have with the diamond dynamics we have going on, it's, it's going to be a little bit more difficult this session. But, so Scott Allen is, apparently his plan is to do a budget motion for the municipal services payment. If that doesn't survive in the budget, in the budget process, then my hope and my, when I talk to him, what I'll ask him to do is put out legislation so we can continue to talk about it. We would anyway without a bill, but it's helpful if we have a bill to point to, and we can rally some people from around the state around that issue. There's also a housing, affordable housing package Rep. Brooks in the Assembly has been working with, a whole wide variety of different folks from, from us in our office to the League of Municipalities, to the towns, the realtors, the builders, you know, kind of everybody's had a seat at this table on how to, how to fix some of these issues. The first bill that's going to be coming out is mainly correcting some of the things that were going on at WEITA. It wasn't WEITA's fault, but the way the programs were aligned, they weren't, those incentives weren't stackable, so you had to choose one or the other. So they're working to correct that stuff to hopefully make those programs more valuable and more well utilized. They're also going to be looking at other things going forward, and will be involved in those conversations. So those are kind of the big items that are going on right now. I don't want to come across as a doomsayer, but it, it's just a very difficult session. I think once we get past April, we'll have a better idea what the rest of the session's going to look like. April 1st, I should say, and we'll have a better idea how much we're going to be able to accomplish.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alder Latimer-Burris? You're muted, Alder.
Yes, first I wanted just to thank you for this presentation and thank you for working with the Common Council Office, you know, coordinating us so that we all get included. I'm wondering if you could just explain a little bit more to us about the WEITA stacking, just for those that don't know, and including myself, and, you know, yeah, if you could just talk about that now and what it could be in the future, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, what I, what I'd like to offer, if, if it's okay with you, is if it's, it's pretty technical in nature, so what I'd like to do is put together a, a one-pager, and I can send it out to everybody on the council, so you have it for future reference as well, if that works.
Yes, absolutely. And as much as you can send us information, that's always really great for us, as we're, all of us are on a super high learning curve, even if we've had experience in the, working in the legislature or doing other political activity, there's a lot to learn. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, no problem. We'll get that, we'll get that over to you this week. And it's, it's kind of, the bill hasn't been introduced yet, so it might be somewhat of a moving target. There might be things that change, but I can kind of give you what the bill looks like right now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, you go here.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any prospects at all for approval of a later version of the building codes than the rather ancient ones that we're saddled with now?
Prospects, yes. I mean, it's always a challenging process to, to get a coordinated vision for updating the building codes between the Department of Safety and Professional Services and the legislature, made further difficult by some Supreme Court cases that are going to perhaps fundamentally change the way in which the, the governor's agencies go through the rulemaking and building code process, rulemaking process including the building codes. So there are a number of large code revisions. The plumbing code, for example, is undergoing its re-revision for the first time in, in 30-plus years, I think. And so those, those efforts are, the department, I know, is working, trying to get those things through at the appropriate timing, but also with an eye to the fact that there is a, there's a potential large sea change on, on the horizon for how rulemaking happens in the state.
Thank you.
Which could frankly affect all of our issues, but.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, thanks very much for your presentation this evening, and moreover, look forward to working with you. Thanks for wanting to work on our behalf. I just have a real simple question. I know you are a relatively large firm with a variety of clients. Do you regularly publish any sort of like weekly update or newsletter for your clients? We receive those from our DC lobbying firm, Covino, and, and the Dane County City and Villages lobbyist, Forbes McIntosh, and the league hasn't at least cut some of us off yet. And so we, we get, we get their updates as well, and I was just wondering if we could add yours to the portfolio if you have one.
We do. Short answer is we do, I, I, okay, as, I personally think it needs a little bit of an update, but we do send out a weekly newsletter, and we're happy to coordinate with the city to, to make sure that you all receive that as well.
That would be great.
Yeah, it's generally, it's, it's.
I'm sure very generic.
Yeah, it's not client specific.
It's not, yes, it's not curated to the city of Madison's legislative agenda, exactly.
Yeah, but it, it does have, you know, like I said, we're, we're, we're working on making that a little bit more in-depth and a little bit more valuable, because right now it's, it's a little bit more generic, just to be honest.
Yeah, well, the other ones are too, that I've, you know, that I referenced, to be sure, yeah, for a wider audience. Yeah, so thank you for including us on your mailing list.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rivers.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the presentation, guys. It's really good. Perhaps I should ask the mayor this question, but I'll ask you, my understanding that the contract is specifically to lobby the state with respect to the budget. Is that correct? Or are we more widely employing you about these ancillary broader issues as well?
Yeah, it's, it's anything that the, the city directs us to, to lobby on. So obviously, the, the state budget is the biggest thing that the legislature passes in a two-year period, but I mean, you know, there's all sorts of other issues that come up that we will be helpful on as well.
For the short term, though, the budget, I would imagine, is the number one priority. Though it sounds like the prospects of actually making progress or yielding some kind of significant change from the legislature is not all that likely at this point.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's, it's just a difficult time with those, with the shrunken majorities. You, you look at both the Assembly and the Senate, when you have, they've always had this, this rule, the 50-vote rule and the 17-vote rule. So if you can't, you know, if you're the majority party, if you can't pass a bill with 50 of your own members, then you don't pass the bill. Same thing in the Senate. If you don't have 17 of the majority party people on that bill where it can pass without the minority, you don't pass that bill. I think, my hope is that that changes over time. I don't believe it's going to change much this session, but as, as we move forward, as people get more accustomed to this new, you know, breakdown in, in how the parties, you know, how many, how many members each party has, where it's tighter majorities, then I think you're, you're going to, it's going to necessitate working together. You also look forward to 2026. In almost any scenario that I can think of, Democrats will probably be in charge of the Senate. So, you know, they could have the Senate and not the Assembly, and not the governor, or it could be a trifecta, you know, the Assembly's going to be a little bit harder to get, but, but yeah, the, I'm still hopeful that the budget's going to happen because I, I do worry long-term, and I think some, a lot of the lawmakers do too, what the impact of not passing a budget, because it just makes it easier to not pass one the next time, and the next time, and the next time.
Lastly, if you could just briefly speak to the upside to having this kind of lobbying effort, even if we're not likely to succeed on the municipal services payments or some other kind of revenue sharing, but laying the groundwork, building the case for the next budget cycle.
Yeah, and it's a great question, and something we talk, talk to our clients all the time about. The last time you want to be in the Capitol for the first time is when you need something. You've got to spend time working those relationships, building that trust, like Peter said, educating lawmakers on the issues, because these, these are by and large, pretty smart people, but they have a narrow window of expertise. Whatever, you know, whatever they came into the body with, that's kind of what their expertise is. They don't know everything about everything. And most of the ones, the good ones, they'll admit that, some won't, but most of them will admit that they're, they're limited expertise. So that's, our job is educating them. We've got to build the case, you got to build the coalitions, you got to do all the legwork, which is almost impossible to do as, as a council or as a mayor's office all on your own. So that's what, that's what we'll be working on. And that's why some things, sometimes things take a long time to get done. I mean, it's, it's rare where an idea comes up and it makes it through all-in-one session. You know, you go back to the shared services, or shared revenue. You know, munis have been complaining about shared revenue forever. Right? Always want an increase in that. Well, you finally got it last session, but how long did that take? You know, so it takes some time, you gotta, you gotta talk to the right people and make the right connections and build the right coalition to get both Democrats and Republicans in support.
Well, just as a follow-up, will you be advocating for regional trans authority, or some kind of, you know, conceptually bringing this up, at least planting the seed as one of the avenues for, you know, other ways for munis, as you call them, to raise revenue?
Yeah. So one of the, one of the things that, without getting too much into individual priorities, one of the things that I always recommend to clients is, politics is the art of the possible. Right? Figuring out what's possible.
That one's not, is what you're saying right now.
Right. Right now, with the current makeup and, you know, I think you're probably aware, the current speaker, not a big fan of RTAs. So I think that would be incredibly difficult to get.
Maybe we plant the seed.
We can, we can have, start, you know, we can have those conversations, and that's like, like we had been talking about, some of these things are just long-term. I know RTAs has already been long-term. Right? I mean, I remember when I first came in in 2010, they were, people were talking about that. So I know this has been out there for a long time, but you just don't have the right makeup right now. So focusing on things that, you know, especially making large efforts on things that are highly unlikely.
Got it.
You know, I'd rather focus our time on things that are possible.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add to that, that part of this advocacy strategy broadly is to have that relationship firmly cemented on the ground so that if the timing does change, right, if the timing does emerge, the situation has changed, we've already laid the groundwork to be ahead for an issue like that. It's, again, it goes back to Alder Rummel and the comment about, you know, we need to be expressing what our values are as an entity that lobbies, but then still not, making sure we're not dividing focus on what we think is possible and achievable.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Oh, thank you so much. You guys are going to build a diversity of lobbyists, I could just, just tell. And, you know, it does sound like us, where we come in with a variety of expertise, and so one of the things I just would like to add to the list, and maybe it's best if, you know, I shoot it over to Karen, and, you know, she can coordinate taking these comments, but I think it would be helpful for us to, now, before we're at the building and asking for something, to get resources to read. The reason I say that is, in some of the discussion, there was a mention of rulemaking and the rulemaking process, and because I worked over at the State Senate, and I used to, there used to be a little guide that you could study all the language that everybody's going to use, that is very specific. So if a council doesn't know what rulemaking process is, we don't know what that is. And I don't expect that you would teach us everything, but if we could get some resources that you'd love for us to read and to know, I think that would be very helpful for us helping to come together as a coalition and, and lobby. You'll have a city council that were all lobbyists, so that's kind of exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel.
Thank you, Mayor. It strikes me that we all, like you said, have a lot of interests. It strikes me that we all, like you said, have a lot of interests. Could we collect the list and share it with you that then you could track and report on, as opposed to making it our lobbying priority? Like, for example, I serve on the Madison Sewerage District, and the district's very concerned about the tight amount of funds in the Clean Water Fund. And I'm not sure every alder cares about that, but every alder is affected by the fact that we're growing as a community, and how are we gonna pay for this growth and the various ways that we spend money on things? So, I mean, I've already compiled a list just from our conversation, so through Karen and maybe the executive committee, could we provide a list of then things that you could at least sort of put on your, keep an eye on?
Issue areas, like for legislation that might come up, like issue areas, so that if a bill comes up dealing with the Clean Water Act or, you know,
Or PFAS.
Or PFAS.
Issues.
Yeah, those are things that we can track. So, yeah, if you guys want to come up with a list of kind of those topics that you're interested in as bills are introduced, that align with those, we can certainly send those along.
Thank you, Alder. I don't have any other alders in the queue, so I'll just say, on that topic, that I encourage alders to share your areas that you're interested in or particular priorities with Karen, and Karen and Sam can work together to keep that list fresh and add to it if needed. We're also working to put together at least the sort of template for a leave behind, which is something that Alder Bennett had asked for last time, so we'll be working with these folks to make sure that we get that right. I did hear you say fewer words better, so we'll work on that.
That's impossible.
But we, but, and then make that available, you know, for the times that the council might meet with legislators, as already discussed. And I will also, sorry, gentlemen, point out that these gentlemen are expensive, and so if you want to learn about things going on at the Capitol, there are actually maybe free ways to do that. So we should be a little strategic in our use of their time as well, so we can maybe work together between the mayor's office and the council office if there are issues that you really want more education about, we can maybe try and get that first and then call on them for more resources, or if there's something that you already have prepared that's easy, that's always great as well. Alder Wahili, and another, did you have a last question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, yeah. The question I have is, first of all, thank you for your presentation, looking forward to making impact in terms of our lobbying. My question is, are you working with other municipalities?
Go ahead.
Not directly. We do work for the Fox Valley Chamber of Commerce, as Fox Cities Chamber of Commerce as well, mostly in a legislative monitoring role, but other than that, you know, you're our only muni.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. And one last question is, you alluded to building coalition relationship, and I'm wondering what are some of the key challenges that you see and how you'll overcome, given that we are in a very divided political culture?
Yeah, building coalitions is, it can be tough because you gotta, you know, we might come in with something as our number-one priority, and as we talk to other municipalities that have the same issues, that might be their number three or number four, and they might not be interested in using a lot of political capital on it. So those are some of the, you know, getting people onto the same page, identifying all the people that are kind of in the similar place, that have the same interests and the same priorities and want to move forward, working together on things, that can be a challenge. And then the bigger the coalition is, the harder it is to keep everybody speaking with one voice, so that can be a challenge too, but something that we've, we've been able to successfully employ in a lot of different situations.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, do we have a schedule or any type of check-in that you plan to do with the council, a regularly scheduled check-in with us?
Yeah, I mean, we, so we have a standing meeting with the mayor's office every week, as far as presenting to the council. That would be at your discretion. We can, we can make virtually anything work. You know, if we were gonna do that, I wouldn't suggest weekly.
No.
But, you know, maybe on a monthly, yeah, whatever, quarterly, or however you guys want to do it, we're right down the road, so happy to stop by.
Alder, our thought, and we haven't scheduled it out yet, but we certainly can, was to have them come slightly more frequently to CCEC and give an update and have time for maybe more conversation and discussion, and then, you know, maybe once a year, come to full council if that was needed, but absolutely expect them, I would, my guess is quarterly, but I'd also sort of want to time it relevant to what's going on up at the Capitol.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder.
Just one other thing I'd like to point out real quick is, you know, being a municipal government is vastly different than being a private sector business that we work with. I remember when we had some questions early on in the council when we were first going through the process, there was some talk about, where's the strategy? Give us the strategy. It's really hard to do. We can do that with clients that aren't subject to open records requests and videotaping meetings, but it's very difficult to do for folks like you without tipping our hand. It's like going into a football game and giving the other team your playbook. That can be challenging, so just something to remember as well.
Thank you. Alder Wahili, your hand was up again briefly? Or was it just still up?
Yeah, no, I don't have any question.
Okay, thank you, Alder, I just wanted to make sure. I have no other alders in the queue for questions. So thank you both very much, appreciate you spending your evening with us and looking forward to working together. And again, I just encourage alders to let Karen know any questions or priorities you have, or obviously Sam or myself, and we'll make sure that these guys know about it as well, and when the time comes, looking forward to deploying all of you as part of the strategy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that will take us to item seven. Item seven is Legistar 87159 approving a landmark nomination of the property located at 633 East Johnson Street as the Benjamin and Amy Butt's house in District Six. On item seven, President Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On item seven, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, is there any discussion on item seven? Alder Rummel?
Well, I just want to thank the council for presumably adopting this. This is coming out of our underrepresented communities study that we did with the Historic Preservation Plan, which now seems like one of those plans that got old, how quickly time flies. But anyway, there's a long list of really interesting properties that represent different sectors of our society that we should keep in mind, and thanks to the trust for helping do the nomination. Those things do take research and work, and they're not something we as a city really have capacity, although we have the talent to do it, but not the capacity. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for really bringing this forward. As a black woman, not necessarily born in Madison, this really educated me and brought a lot of information forward that I think is important for me to know and then my children and to be able to pass this down for many years to come, so thank you, Marsha, for your work on this.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item seven? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item seven. That will take us to item 11. Item 11 is Legistar 87623 opposing Social Security Administration Office closures and other cuts to Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security. On item 11, President Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt under suspension of the rules.
Moved and seconded to adopt under suspension. Let me start by asking for unanimous consent to add all alders and the mayor as sponsors. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll add the entire council and the mayor as sponsors on this item. Is there questions for staff on item 11? Or is there any discussion on item 11? Seeing none of either, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item 11? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. That will take us to item 51. Item 51 is Legistar 87451 adopting the 2024 State Street Pedestrian Mall Experiment Report. On item 51, President Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 51. On item 51, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, is there discussion on item 51? Seeing no discussion. Let me just say a big thank you to the staff that have worked on this, not just the report itself, although that would have been enough, but the entire pedestrian mall experiment took a tremendous amount of staff time and creativity, including the staff from the bid and folks from DMI and other downtown businesses, I think is a really wonderful collaborative effort. And as you will have read in the report and in the covering resolution, more to come. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that staff have done on that. Yeah, absolutely, give them a round of applause. All right, item 51 has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 51, and that will take us to item 52, which is the reconsideration of Legistar 87044, which is amending or appealing various sections in chapters eight, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinances relating to reorganization of city boards, commissions, and committees. On item 52, Alder Wahili, would you like to make the motion to reconsider? You're muted, Alder.
Yes, move to reconsider the committee, PSRC Committee.
Alder, you have to move reconsideration on the whole, whole item first?
Yes, move to reconsider the whole agenda, item 52.
So reconsideration is moved by Alder Wahili and seconded by Alder Rummel. The question before us is reconsideration, so let me just make sure everybody knows where we are. The vote, it's a simple majority vote to reconsider. If you vote aye, the item will be back before us, as it was at the last council meeting. If you vote no, the result of the last council meeting will stand, and we'll move on with the agenda. Once, if the aye vote prevails, the item is back before us, and any outcome is possible. You can, there can be motions to amend, there can be a motion to adopt or to place on file, and the discussion just proceeds as if you hadn't voted on it last time. So with that in mind, the motion is to reconsider. Alder?
Just, I don't need to, I don't, but the merits of reconsidering, and she can explain why she wants to reconsider.
So on this item, the motion to reconsider, it is appropriate to discuss why or why not to reconsider, it is not appropriate to discuss the item itself. So Alder Wahili is the maker of the motion to reconsider, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, no, thank you. So I was absent last time at the council meeting, March 11th, and there are two specific items that I was interested in bringing back for reconsideration. One is for the PSRC, the Public Service Review Committee, and the other one is the Early Childhood Education and Care. I have decided to withdraw the Early Childhood Education and Care Committee, so I'm not considering that. But then for the PSRC, I would like to consider looking into the committee work by revisiting the mission of the committee and looking into the work group with the lens of effectiveness and the impact of the committee, looking into the work group, looking into the committee effectiveness and outcome and impact. And I have sent, I've worked with, talked to various individuals, including Alder Rummel, Tony Haas, Karen, and Kristi, and based on the discussion I had, I have sent my motion to reconsider, and the language is in the email for the all alders, so I hope you will reconsider this.
Thank you, Alder. I just want to make sure that you sent that language to the clerk as well, for the record.
I think so. If not, maybe Karen can forward.
The attorney is saying he can forward it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. On the question of reconsideration, Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes. Yes, I just, it was a point of information, part of it was answered, that it was specific to some specific, the reconsideration was specific to certain items, because we're not gonna go over the, I'm just asking, is, are we gonna be going over the whole night? I wasn't here last time, so I understand you guys went late, but the way it was framed, it sounded like we'd be opening, we're going back to opening the whole night, so it was really a point of information, but I think Attorney Haas clarified it.
Thank you, Alder. It is correct that the whole item will be open before you again. The alder's intent is to move a specific amendment, but the item will be on the, before you on the table, and any alder could make any motion that would be in order regarding it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue on the question of reconsideration, so on reconsideration, all those in favor, aye, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Field? Alder Field, no. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Gravender-Agen?
Aye.
Alder Gravender-Agen, aye. Alder Uguir?
Aye.
Alder Uguir, aye. Alder Hank McKinnney is excused. Alder Knox?
Alder Knox, aye.
Alder Knox, aye. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Aye.
Alder Latimer-Burris, aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Alder Miyazee?
Aye.
Alder Miyazee, aye. Alder Rummel?
Aye.
Alder Rummel, aye. Alder Tischler?
No.
Alder Tischler, no. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vitter?
Aye.
Alder Vitter, aye. Alder Wahelia?
Aye.
Alder Wahelia, aye. Alder Bennett is excused. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. I shall 16 ayes, 2 noes.
Thank you. With 16 ayes and 2 noes, the item is back before us, and so the first thing we need to do is get a motion on the item. President Figaro Cole? Move to adopt as amended by CCEC?
So we've been back as a normal, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, move to adopt as amended by CCEC.
Moved and seconded to adopt as amended by CCEC, so the item is back before us. Is there further discussion? Alder Rummel?
I guess first I have a question, Mayor. Can, if there's more than one motion, we can have up to two more after the underlying motion was moved again?
That's correct, but we've already dispensed with reconsideration, so we're only one motion in now.
We passed it, so it's back on the floor, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Yep, so you could, once, the motion is now to adopt Yep, so you could, once the, the motion is now to adopt, you could have an amendment and then amendment to an amendment, but you can't go any farther than that.
Got it. Well, I would like to move an amendment that is not the one that Alder Weheli sent to you, and that is the motion that I made last meeting, which is the motion to strike number 12, section 33.22 entitled Public Safety Review Committee of the Madison General Ordinances is repealed. So that number 12 sentence should be repealed in the underlying or the motion that's on the table.
So just to clarify, Alder Rommel, this is the same motion where you, the, the effect would be to not?
To not repeal, to rescind.
Repeal PSRC.
And if it's okay to then give an explanation or?
Is there a second to Alder Rommel's motion? Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. And, and thank you to Alder Weheli for asking for reconsideration. I mean, I guess the question will be for us is if, do you want to believe in this committee should exist, or do you want to give it a year if she makes her motion?
Is she not deniable, available?
But I just wanted to remind you, some of the comments I made last time is, of the three public safety committees, if, if this is repealed, and there's only two, neither the public, the Police and Fire Commission or the Police Civilian Oversight Board have Alders that serve on them, there will be no Alders on a committee that, and no look at like the major issues of police and fire, which is policy and budget and work plans. And I just found that to be something I thought we should reconsider, and thankfully, we can try that again. I could talk more, but at some point I will stop and let the conversation continue and chime back in later. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. So the motion before us is Rommel amendment to keep, restore Public Safety Review Committee to remove it from being removed, if you will. So that's what is up for discussion. Alder Weheli?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think one of the reasons why I decided to reconsider this is because of Alder Rommel statement where all other committees have, don't have Alders, and this is the only committee that have, you know, Alders. And to just sunset this committee based on lack of quorum, lack of committee meetings or quorum, I think we all second chance to see what is the purpose and visiting the underlying, you know, objective of the, you know, of the committees so that we can see if it's worth keeping it. And that's one of the reasons why I really want to bring back to reconsider, so that we have a year to see it, and it will be at the disposal of the new Alders when they, when they are elected to consider if they want to continue or not. But just to kill it or to dissolve this committee without any chance, I think that was my intent to bring back as reconsideration. So I hope we can, if we don't have the vote for Alder Rommel, I hope you can vote to keep it for a year, giving them objectives and, you know, vision and purpose and connecting with the main, you know, some of the language that I worked with Tony Haas is from the ordinance. And the reason why this committee was lacking quorum is, I think, is having a purpose and vision. And this one year, we'll be able to have those vision and hope you will consider to vote for my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Knox?
Yeah. Are we, which amendment are we talking about?
We're currently talking about the Rommel amendment to keep PSRC.
Yeah, okay, yes. To keep the public service, yeah. I'm not going to, you know, be legarist because I think I spoke when the original resolution was open, but I do really think that this is a very important committee. I think it offers an opportunity if us Alders choose to refer very important safety items to it. And so, and then I think there were some very thoughtful comments or comments that were sent about the importance of, of, of safety. So I really think, given the multiplicity of other safety issues we have, that if we utilize this committee effectively, it can, it can have a real strong purpose in, to make some headway. The other thing, though, that I'll just briefly mention is, I really do think, where I understand we need to kind of, the whole goal of this was to reduce the number of committees and number of committees that a lot of us serve on and the number of staff that it creates work for, I still believe that it's very important to have residents and citizens have an opportunity to participate in government. I think that's critically fundamental to what we call democracy. And so this is one committee in addition to, I mentioned, another committee that I thought was very important to maintain. So I'm going to support this amendment.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak on the Rommel amendment. So what's before us is the Rommel amendment, which would have the effect of keeping the Public Safety Review Committee. The technical language is to strike number 12 and, and the language therein that would delete the Public Safety Review Committee. On the Rommel amendment, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Field. Alder Field, no. Aldo Figueroa Cole.
Aye.
Aldo Figueroa Cole, aye. Aldo Gvinarajan. Aldo Gvinarajan, no. Aldo Yugar.
No.
Aldo Yugar, no. Aldo Harrington McKinnon is excused. Aldo Knox. Aldo Knox, you're muted.
Aye.
Aldo Knox, aye. Thank you. Aldo Latimer-Burris.
Yes.
Aldo Latimer-Burris, aye. Aldo Madison.
Aye.
Aldo Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez Rutherford.
Aye.
Martinez Rutherford, aye. Aldo Miyazze.
Aye.
Miyazze, aye. Aldo Rommel.
Aye.
Aldo Rommel, aye. Aldo Tischler.
No.
Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere.
Aye.
Aldo Revere, aye. Aldo Vitter.
Aye.
Aldo Vitter, aye. Aldo Wehelia.
Aye.
Aldo Wehelia, aye. Aldo Bennett is excused. Aldo Conklin.
Aye.
Aldo Conklin, aye. Aldo Curry.
Aye.
Aldo Curry, aye. Aldo Duncan.
Aye.
Aldo Duncan, aye. Aldo Evers.
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye. 14 ayes, 4 noes.
With 14 ayes and 4 noes, the Rommel amendment passes. So what's before us is the main motion, so item 52 as amended by CCEC and the Rommel amendment. Is there further discussion? What's before us is item 52 as amended by CCEC and the Rommel amendment. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no. Aldo Tischler?
I'll just stick with no.
Aldo Tischler will be recorded as voting no. Is there any other objection? Seeing no other objection, we'll record that vote. We'll trust the clerk to figure it out. And that will bring us to the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or other introductions of items from the floor? Seeing, oh, Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
I'm still pregnant.
Aldo, Aldo Latimer-Burris?
I just wanted to say that it was, you know, whenever having this sense, saying people won't be coming back because we have people are retiring, yeah, it was beautiful to have a diverse councils. We're unique, we're going to go down in history, maybe as unique, I don't know. I just wanted to say that, whether it was appropriate or not.
Thank you, Aldo Latimer-Burris. I was going to recognize that this is the last full council meeting of this council, and so I just want to say thank you to all of you for your service, whether you're returning or not. We appreciate you, and we will see you at the April 15th meeting to do some more thanking and recognizing and swearing in of the new council. Aldo Field, it is your turn.
I'll adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.